We'll get to you down the agenda.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, and you've got.
So call me your order. Let's see, local.
Boggs. Campbell. Corlou. Cullen.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Patino?
Hey, you got it.
All right. Slater?
Here.
We didn't have a quorum. Okay. So, the minutes from the August thirteenth meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. I'll concede afterwards if I can for a signature of the approvals.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. And the agenda. Mike, could you just tell us, talk us through the agenda real quick?
Mr. Chairman, we just have a really live agenda tonight. There's no submittals, but the first thing that we'll do is we'll have the city attorney kind of lead us through a selection of officers. We've had the chairman to resign, so we'll have to re-select our officers. Additionally, we have some folks with T-Dot that are going to give us a presentation on long-range planning, transportation planning, and kind of provide us with a continuing ad hour. There's also, if I could, you've got the advertised agenda, but if we could move item four down to item five and have a new item four as a recommendation to add the director of Second South Cheatham Utility District as an ex officio member. We'll have a discussion on that.
Discussion on that? Okay. Anybody opposed that idea?
No.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Move approval, the minutes, I mean, of the agenda. Second.
So, to approve the agenda as amended by Mike?
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The amended minutes or the amended agenda passes. Okay, so.
Selection.
Take it away.
All right. We'll be electing the chair and vice chair tonight, so I will open the floor for nominations for chairman.
I nominate Mike Patino.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I would just make a comment that one of your members was chairman of the Cheatham County Planning Commission for a number of years. I don't know if he'd be willing to serve or not, but his name ought to be thrown up there for consideration, and that's Tony Campbell.
Do you have a second for Mr. Campbell's nomination?
Second. If he did it to me, I'll do it to him.
I'm not aware, I'm sorry, I'm not aware that there was any prior discussion of who the chairman hoped to be, and if there was, I apologize for the air.
There can't legally be any discussion prior.
I didn't.
So if you weren't having that discussion, don't tell us about it.
No, I haven't had that discussion.
Are there any other nominations? About a motion that nominations cease?
I move that we cease nominations for a chairperson.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Okay, so we'll now open it for discussion for our nominated parties, Mr. Patino and Mr. Campbell, should anyone feel so lucky discussing.
Well, since Tony's not here, I don't know if it would be fair to vote for him.
Position where he's not aware.
Yeah, because I'm not real sure what his, you know, he's kind of pulled away from a lot of things.
Yeah. Well, we could always make him a vice chair.
Well, that's true.
Would it be appropriate then to draw the withdrawal of his name?
We can leave it on there and just everyone cast your votes supporting him. Do we have a motion to call the vote?
I move that we call the vote.
Second.
All right. All in favor for Mr. Patino, please indicate by raising your hand. All right.
I vote against yourself.
For Mr. Patino. All right, so I declare it is a unanimous verdict. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So let's wrap up.
We're already in the chair, so.
That's right. Let's wrap up with our vice chair nominations. Open the floor for those.
I nominate Tony Campbell.
Second.
Any other nominations? Do you have a motion?
I move that the nominations be closed.
All right. And vote by acclamation.
Yes.
All in favor of Mr. Campbell serving as vice chair? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Campbell will be our new vice chair.
I think they'll be accepted.
I'm sure they'll name this place third, no matter what.
That's a good point, Tony.
Mr. Chairman, the new number four, just wanted to give you some genesis of some discussions, I guess, that we've had is the Second South Cheatham Utility District is really kind of a key player in development in the town, and they've been kind of on the back end of some of the discussions that we've had, when we've had development. When we had our subdivision that we just did on Harpethills Drive, there was an issue with the placement of the hydrant with the two lots when moving the lock line around. When we had our commercial with the Dollar General, there was, there was, you'll remember that we adopted, I guess they, the planning commission adopted a site plan that didn't fit with the trunk line that was coming across the property, so they had to re, you know, move where the entrance was going to be off Abbey Place and onto Case of Springs Road, so. Those are just two examples, but what they've really kind of made clear to me is that, you know, they're a partner in some of the development that goes on in the town, but it's not really communicated to them upfront what's going on, or that there's a utility mindset between some of the board members or an expertise that they feel like they can bring up to take. So, we, I carried a conversation with them this week, and then we discussed it with the city attorneys this weekend. It may be appropriate to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to just have their director, whoever that director is, it's, you know, Bill Zimmerman now, but whoever their director at the utility district is to sit on our board as an ex officio member or as an ongoing member, just so that they can kind of bring some of the comments, you know, for water provision forward and kind of so that they can be kind of front end of the whole development.
You're talking about this board or the?
This board.
Okay.
But how, I guess the path that was recommended to me by the city attorney was to have a recommendation and then have the board solidify that through ordinance. And so that's, that's why I'd like to hear some of the conversation.
I don't have a problem with it. I'll make a motion that we.
Is, so I assume that Mr. Zimmerman's open to this, this option and would actually attend planning meetings and we had that conversation this afternoon, and it was yes on both cases. He was, he was pretty enthusiastic about it, actually. And it's unclear to me whether it's been discussed having him on this board here in the past or not, but he was.
It's a good idea, because in the past we've run into situations where his input would have been in, you know, of interest of us, you know? Just like you said with the dollar store and the other thing, so, you know. I don't have a problem with it. Like I said, I'll make a motion that we appoint the chairperson of the, or what's his title?
The director.
The director of Second South Cheatham Utility District to serve as a backer of this board.
One comment again. Cheatham County Planning Commission, they have a, Second South has a member on the planning commission, Chester.
Probably one of their directors.
Yeah, he's a director there.
And certainly we can add, chairman, if you want, in our planning process that we can contact them when plans are submitted, so it's a checklist item.
Right.
Also concur.
We, we had that conversation today about just typical building permits that the building official would issue, making sure that he's consulted on that, but of course, you know, if there's an item coming for the planning commission, we were just trying to figure out how to get his and the utility districts' influence on that.
Tom, are you thinking that there's a downside?
No, no, I'm just bringing up the point that there is. They have a liberal, yeah, for the supply.
But on county, though, he's a full voting member.
Yes, he is. There's nothing.
Because Mr. Zimmerman is not actually an in-county resident, he's a Dixon County resident. Mary, what are your thoughts on this, just out of curiosity?
Well, this is actually.
Have you experienced this in another format, in another city or area?
Yeah, I mean, we did make provisions for this at the checklist item. You know, having that process outlined, so, you know, the first comes to you, you send the plans to me at the same time, you can send it to them and also to the engineer that's on call, you know, so that we've got that process outlined, I think. You can help with a flow chart or whatever you need in order to make sure that that's a transparent process, that it goes to both, you know, them for a review and they can check off on it. And I, you know, if he's willing to serve or sit on the board, and if that's right, there could be a lot of, I don't know, time that he's going to tend maybe to, it's not going, not going to be in front, so. More than anything is, most plans gets, he's part of the review process.
Okay. Martha, did you have, as far as adding, as doing this, is it, with the charter and the way the planning commission set up, is this something we can do?
Right, this is something we, yeah.
City commission?
We will be making a recommendation to the city commission to do basically an ordinance that will allow private items. Since it's not, you know, vested with voting rights, we don't lay up an issue with respect to residency and case of springs. It's really more of an advisory capacity.
So is he, I mean, based on, Mary, based on Mary's comments, does he think he wants to come to the monthly meetings even though we may not be discussing something?
He had indicated that, actually, he wanted to have a little more context with the city, just day to day, in terms of the things that, you know, the building official can sign off on in addition to the major things that will come with the planning. So he wanted that sort of knowledge upfront and pretty much universally, he was interested in that.
So I think what I'm hearing is it would be good for us to have a flow chart of you, or at least an approvals process that includes that person at an early enough stage that they're, that they're seeing ahead of time what's coming down the line. And, you know, I'm not hearing anybody that thinks it's a bad idea that he's an ex officio member of this commission. There is the idea that you might come to three meetings and go, well, there's nothing here for him. So, so what would the next step be?
Just for a motion to. Mike has a motion.
I had a motion, but I didn't have a second.
How's that gonna?
And what was the motion?
It was a motion to say that.
To, to ask the city commission to appoint the director of the South Cheatham Utility District to this board as a, how do you put it? Ex officio member.
Okay. So you're going to second it?
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So there's your recommendation. So, is T-Dot next up, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
You're on the spot now.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you all for having us out today. My name is Larry McEgan, and I have with me Charlie Gumbel. We both work in the long-range planning division at T-Dot. We're actually in an office called the Office of Community Transportation, and I'll get a little bit more than to tell you how that operates, how we operate at T-Dot. But overall, what we wanted to do today is just kind of give a general, I guess, overall, just understanding, you know, we understand how T-Dot operates and how transportation planning works from T-Dot's perspective in the state, especially over the last couple of years, since we tried to have more of a tie-in and collaboration in land use and transportation, since they really affect each other. Decisions that are made on both sides affect each other, so we talked a lot about that today. Really quick, like I said, the Office of Community Transportation was formed back in 2013, at the beginning of the year, actually, and once again, it's to increase the level of collaboration between T-Dot and local partners such as yourself, because like I said, the decisions that you all made, city and county planning commissions and the city and county councils actually affect, you know, what we're trying to do transportation-wise, and even your own cities are trying to do transportation-wise, and at the same time, transportation decisions that are made by the states, the local governments and the counties can affect, you know, the development that occurs in the cities and the counties and the state. So we have eight planners that are located throughout the state, myself and Jonathan, we cover T-Dot's Region Three. T-Dot is broken up into four regions, so Region Three is pretty much the middle Tennessee area. Of course, Cheatham County, Harpsfield, Nashville, all the way down to Memphisboro, some of our southern counties include, I think they have county names. Anyway, down to the southern counties, and then we actually have, what did I say, two other, four other, or six other planners that are located. Two in Knoxville, they cover the eastern part of the state, two more in Chattanooga, they cover, like I said, other middle part of the state, and then we actually have two other planners that are located in Memphis, they cover the western part of the state. We also work heavily with the RPOs, the rural planning organizations that are located throughout the state. Cheatham County is a member of the middle Tennessee rural planning organization. These rural planning organizations were put together, I guess those are the areas that are pretty much outside of the NPOs, which are the metropolitan planning organizations, which are metropolitan areas that are over fifty thousand population. So all the RPO areas, we have twelve RPO areas that are located throughout the state, and they get together on a regular basis. Typically, the county elected official, the mayor, county executive, and several city mayors are part of the executive boards of those RPOs, and there's also a technical committee, typically involved in county and city, a couple of work supervisors, highway supervisors. So, so we're heavily involved with them, really trying to get more planning integrated back into the rural areas. So we'll talk about several ways that we're doing that. Just some of the things that we're going to talk about today, I really want to hit a lot on some of the funding opportunities, just to make you aware of some of the funding opportunities that come through the state, and a lot of those will tie into the land use and transportation connection that I'm speaking about. Another funding opportunity is actually state aid for county road systems, we'll get into that. And just in general, like I said, help you to be informed of some of the opportunities that are available for this community. I'll get a little bit into functional classification, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that at all, functional classification of roadway systems. You learn a little bit about that today, I won't get too deep into that. Corridor management, talk a little bit about corridor management and access management. That'll be my last section, and then Jonathan's going to come and tell you a little bit more about what we've been doing with just long-range planning in general. T-Dot's been undergoing a long-range transportation plan over the last couple of years, so Jonathan will talk a lot about that at the end of our presentation. So some of the funding opportunities I want to talk about today include this list, Transportation Alternatives, Multi-Motor Access Grant, Community Transportation Planning Grant, State Industrial Access Roads, Road Safety Audit Reviews, or R-S-A-Rs, we call them, and then also STP funds that are federal dollars that come to the state, as well as congestion mitigation and air quality improvement, or CMAC funds, and I guess I'll get to those. Starting off with Transportation Alternatives, those are funds that are available to cities and counties, those are federal dollars that come to the state, as well as the four major NPOs in the state, and those funds can be used for all the different items that you see on the list to build infrastructure, for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, safe routes for drivers. Those funds can also be used for safe routes for school projects. There's also opportunities to convert abandoned railroad corridors into trails, scenic turnouts and overlooks, outdoor advertising management, also historic preservation and rehab of historic transportation facilities, and also vegetation management. Those funds come at an eighty percent, twenty percent match, so eighty percent funded through federal dollars, and then the local community is responsible for the twenty percent match. And with Transportation Alternatives, those are actually only, can be used for construction, so the actual construction of the project. So typically, when you go through a project process through T-Dot, especially using federal dollars, you have to start off with, there's four major phases. There's the INIPA phase, which is the environmental phase, and then the actual design, the design of the project, and then if there's any right-of-way that needs to be acquired for the project, that's kind of the third phase, and then there's construction. So with Transportation Alternatives, the city or county who's going after this type of project are responsible for those first three phases of the project as far as funding those. And then, construction funds can be used, once again, just on the, or funds can be used for construction only. And the great cycle for those historically, those actually open up towards the end of the summer, and they're due the first week, so we actually do have some application. And I don't know if Case of Springs either are familiar, have ever received a Transportation Alternative grant? I know Ashton City actually received one last year, so. Anyways. Most of these, and these are just recommendations and some tips, but these type of projects, you really want to fund the projects that are going to be over three hundred thousand dollars. The reason why, there's a lot of administration that goes into these type of projects, once again, it's federal dollars, so there's a lot of paperwork and, you know, boxes that have to be checked off, so what we found in the past, if you're doing small projects, it may end up costing the cities, counties a lot of work than, you know, if you're doing a larger project. So we do recommend a pretty large projects with these. Engineering and grant administration costs are not reimbursable, like I said, but the construction costs are. Environmental documentation must be completed with any type of project that uses federal dollars. Like I said, I won't go too into the details of it with all of this, but typically, a timeframe for a project like this is about five years. So if you're thinking about doing some type of project that's going to involve Transportation Alternatives, once you get started doing the planning phases and actually go after the grant, I mean, you can expect that it's going to be a three to five year process before you actually have your project constructed. But there's been a lot of projects across Tennessee that have used Transportation Alternative grants. A lot of downtown, it has been actually Dixon, a lot of the hesitation that's going on downtown Dixon, that was used, a lot of it was done using the Transportation Alternative.
Question for you. The county is presently repaving the South Harpethill Road, which is, stretches from the city limits all the way over to Hopper Creek. There's probably three or four, five or six miles of asphalt, big project. There's probably not six houses on the whole road. Is the county, I mean, is the state involved in this?
Is it, is it a state road? Is it a state route?
South Harpethill, I don't know if it is. So if it's not going to be state, the county, the DLP wouldn't be involved in it?
Probably not, yes.
Yeah, that's not a state reference.
How do they justify repaving that thing?
I probably. Another grant that we have is a multi-motor access grant. It's very similar to the Transportation Alternative grant. One of the reasons why we had this is, you know, of course, the state uses a lot of dollars to pave roadways, which are very important throughout our state, but we also wanted to make sure that we have funds that are, once again, looking at other alternatives, how people want to get around, whether it's through pedestrian facilities, biking facilities, and also transit facilities. So that's really what the multi-motor access grant is for, it's all state dollars. We had thirty million dollars that was set aside a couple of years ago, and so far, we've funded about twenty million dollars a day. We actually have another application process that's getting ready to begin a little later this month for that final ten million dollars. But once again, those projects go through the RPOs and through the NPOs, so if Case of Springs were to want to submit for a NPO or a multi-motor access grant, that would actually be submitted through the RPO, and then it's up to the RPO board to select amongst all the other applications that may come through the RPO, which two that would move on to the state for the final decision. And we just actually heard a little bit about Jessica Wilson is the manager of this program. She said, over the first couple of years, I think it was thirteen that were awarded, thirteen grants that were awarded, first year, fourteen the second year, so that's probably pretty much a trend. One thing that's great about this is a really good match, there's ninety-five percent that are state funds, and then the local communities are responsible for coming up with five percent of the match, so that's a good. And then eligible activities, like I said, include infrastructure for pedestrians, bicycles, and transit users. They typically have to be on a state route, or I think it's a quarter mile near a state route, if we want these types of projects. Just some multi-motor access examples, I mean, you can see, what we're trying to improve are, you know, situations like this where you have just corridors where you can see on the right, there's obviously people walking up and down this state route, and, but there's no sidewalk. And that's actually that pole that you see on the right, that's actually a bus stop, so people pretty much are getting left off into a ditch, and you can imagine if it's raining, it's really not a good place for, you know, people to actually want to catch the bus. I think this other example that we have, once again, here, you know, a road where people are crossing, there's no, there's really no crosswalks. It's really not a safe intersection for people to cross, and you have situations like this on the right, it's the same thing, it's a heavily, you know, commercialized area, but there's, I mean, not even a place for people to put out their trash, but, you know, people walk up and down these corridors, and there's just no pedestrian facilities. So like I said, these projects typically are primarily located on a state route. There's usually little to no right-of-way required, so the plan was for these projects to be able to move fast, you know, they still have to go through all the process, you know, small environmental process, design, if any right-of-way is necessary, but typically, most of the projects that are selected don't meet any, don't meet any right-of-way, and then, so we can hopefully get to construction pretty quickly. So like I said, Jessica Wilson, she's the bike path coordinator for T-Dot, and that's her contact information, you know, if you don't have that now, we can get that to you. Another grant that we have that's pretty tight and close to the multi-motor access grant is the Community Transportation Planning Grant, and that's actually, comes right out of our office. We just had our first year of grants that were awarded this past, in 2015. The purpose of the grant was to provide rural cities with some funding opportunities to do some planning, planning, basically do plan, do planning projects that will hopefully lead to implementation projects within their cities. And we found that, you know, a lot of smaller cities in the rural areas, they may not have had access to a planner and planning, the funds to be able to fund some type of project like this. So that's one of the reasons why we created this program. So once again, the eligibility are cities that are located outside of the metropolitan planning area, so those cities that are within the RPOs. And then the funding availability, in the first year, we funded up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for individual projects. And then there's a ninety-ten match, so ninety percent are state dollars and then a ten percent local match.
Who's state or is that federal money?
State dollars. Well, to be honest, it was state dollars initially. We are using some federal dollars on this now. Well, to be honest, it was state dollars initially, we are using some federal dollars on this now, too. Um, some of the plant eligible planning activities, in the first year, we had seven, uh, we had, so we had corridor studies, um, which once again, you're looking at a, a major corridor and how that operates, um, a lot of that, um, involved access management, which I'll talk about a little later. Uh, complete streets plans, so once again, looking at a roadway or several railways and seeing how it can be, uh, more than just a, a corridor for vehicles. So how is your transit going to be able to move up and down court this corridor? How is your bicycle pedestrians can move up and down this corridor and everybody can use the, the streets, uh, uh, like I said, outside of just the automobile? Uh, local road concepts and guidelines, which we didn't get any applications for that, that was kind of a, that one actually, I think, is going away, um, as far as the eligibility for next year, uh, same thing with transportation ordinances, so we won't get too much into those. Um, transportation systems, management and operations, that's pretty much just your traffic signals, optimizing those traffic signals to, to move, uh, vehicles along the corridor a lot, a lot, uh, more efficient. Uh, road diet analysis, uh, once again, looking at a roadway and seeing if it, if it's, uh, you know, it would be more beneficial to take, uh, maybe a four lane roadway down to a three lane roadway, maybe then maybe you're able to put in bike lanes, or maybe you put in some type of parking. Um, and so, I don't think we had, we might have one project last year that I think that was a road diet. And then bicycle and pedestrian plans, once again, that was one of the, the, um, the grants that most people went after, um, uh, and once again, it's just to look at the community, uh, or maybe it's a particular corridor, and see how you can, uh, increase and, and, and improve the bicycle and pedestrian facilities within that, um, that city. Uh, once again, the benefits of the plan, it engages the community, creates a supportive vision, uh, but also, uh, helps the, the community to, to, to gain an inventory of its current infrastructure conditions, uh, you know, just doing a sidewalk, like I said, doing a sidewalk or pedestrian plan, you obviously are going to be able to see where you, you have sidewalks, what are the conditions of the sidewalks, where sidewalks needed, things like that. Uh, it also provides a data-driven approach to long-range goals, and it also outlines the implementation and phases, uh, and resources. So what we hope with this project, and the reason why we did this type of plan, uh, or program, was once again, when we had the transportation alternative grants, and those have been going on for years, and then the multimodal access grant, which has been going on the last couple of years, what we saw was a lot of people were applying for these grants, but maybe didn't really have a plan, you know, they, but they knew they needed sidewalks, you know, they needed this, this road, needed sidewalks. So we wanted to make sure that we provided an opportunity for, especially, like I said, cities that may not have the, the funds to be able to do a plan, to come up with a plan so that way you can see how, um, after, as they're going after these grants, how it can be phased in, and they say, hey, you know, for this particular portion, let's go after a multimodal access grant, and then this next phase, maybe the city can fund it themselves, and then maybe the final phase, we can go after a transportation alternatives grant, so. We really just wanted to be more integrated with.
Mary, I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry, um, I mean, I, I love this information, by the way, are we going to give a copy of the slide deck, so?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause that's, I can't absorb it all, it's a lot.
Yeah, I said, I'm talking fast, you know, cause of your time, but, no, yeah, absolutely.
Well, when I'm thinking of this plan and a planning grant, what immediately comes to mind is, in that process, is there an analysis that starts, like, how are we doing now? What is happening now? What is trending now?
Right.
As a starting place, before we say we need sidewalks here or?
Right, um, and that can, that can, that can occur at different points, um, it can occur during the application process, where you may actually do an inventory of kind of your existing conditions, um, most cities do that, but probably on a smaller level because they, they make that part of their application. But once you actually get into the plan, I mean, yeah, you really do want to, that's the first, the first part of the plan.
Process, right.
What are our conditions? What do we have right now, so that way you can, uh, know what, what your needs are.
And then that's, that's what I'm trying to understand, so it would seem to me, if it was just me and I was thinking, we need a plan, I would hope that that process starts with, let's do an analysis, instead of me thinking this is what I need to do.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's a part of, hey, we know we need to do something, and part of that is an analysis.
Right, right, yeah, you definitely want to analyze all your, you know, except your existing conditions, and so we can see where you need to go.
Okay.
Good question. Uh, really quick, like I said, we, the two thousand fourteen grant cycle actually began around this time last year, and, uh, we, and, uh, awarding projects in the spring of last year, and we're getting ready to release the next round of funds, um, or not funds, but their next round of applications a little later this month. Um, and, and with the multimodal access grant and with this grant, the goal is that hopefully we can continue, you know, these projects. Obviously, they're, they're kind of starting off this year, last year was our pilot, so, but our plan is to continue, so, um, you know, hopefully next year, we'll be able to have another round of, uh, another grant cycle as well. Oh, and just, yeah, really quick, so you can see, we had twenty-five applications submitted, most of them were corridor studies, and then, uh, you see there were six bike, bicycle and pedestrian plans, um, there were three, over three million dollars that were, uh, requested. We actually ended up, uh, funding eight projects totaling about one million dollars last year. Uh, and those are the locations of the, the, uh, awards, I won't go through all of those, but we kind of tried to spread it across the state, at least that first year. And I won't go too much into this, but this was just kind of what we were telling people, you know, some of the do's and don'ts, you know, like, if you want to, you know, do your application, make sure you're providing maps and pictures, things like that, just to kind of, uh, help people to, um, better their, their, uh, their applications, so, too much into that, but you'll have that information. Uh, state industrial access roads, those are, um, actually this, uh, program that's provided by the state through T D I that we're able to, um, provide what exactly what it is, access roads to industries, you know, uh, local communities, uh, they have an industry, uh, that's coming to their community, and, uh, it's really just an economic development opportunity, where we can say, well, you know, maybe that, that, maybe need a two lane road, uh, to connect that, that industry to, uh, a state route or something like that, so. Obviously, the goods that are being, uh, created by that road can get access to our, our major railways. So, um, I think we just had, yeah, this is random, we'll skip that one, I think that's.
Okay.
Well, we, yeah, we, we got an order, we're fine. Oh, we got an order a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. We had some, we didn't know about the, the setup. Anyway, so, I don't know how far we're going to go into this.
Yeah.
Really out of order, that's okay. Uh, so state industrial access roads, once again, those are, you know, it's not really a good grant, I mean, if you have, there is an application process, uh, if you have, and those are, and it's based off of two, what's the, uh, I guess the benefit, you know? So they look at the number of employees that that industry's going to bring, and then of course, the, the length of the roadway that's needed, and how it compares, and that's kind of how those projects are designed upon where they're not going to be, they're going to be funded. And like, so we can get more information about those if you, if you need it. All right, how we going to house? We'll go from here. It's made to come back to us. Yeah, we'll see how far. Is that really? Start Jonathan stuff here. Okay.
There you go.
We just got to go back, we'll, we'll figure that out. So, um, like I said, typically those roads, the state industrial access roads, are just two travel lanes, um, um, you know, small shoulders on the sides, once again, we're, we're not building major, you know, Cadillac drives to these roads, but it's just something that's going to provide access to these industries. Uh, typically, you know, with a, a strong road is going to be a handle of the truck traffic that are typically on those roads. Uh, road safety audit reviews, really quickly, uh, you know, one of T D I's major goals is to be, provide safe roadways throughout our, our, um, state. So one of the things we do is we have, uh, uh, road safety audit reviews, whatever a community, uh, city and county, uh, you know, they have an unsafe condition, and it could be on a roadway that's not necessarily, necessarily a state route, it could be a local route, um, you know, and there's, there's high, uh, amount of crashes there, especially if they're getting, you know, serious crashes, um, you know, they can actually submit information to, through the R P O or just directly to our office, and then we can do an analysis to see if, um, it's going to warrant a road safety audit review. So, the road safety audit reviews, uh, we actually have consultants as well as T D I staff that actually come out to the location, and they really just do an audit review, uh, of that actual location to see, uh, you know, look at the signage, look and see if there's guardrails that are necessary, all types of, uh, you know, safety, uh, information, and they can collect all that data, and then from that point, of course, they have to tell whether or not that project is going to be able to be eligible for safety funds that come through T D I, and if that's the case.
You mean that the county didn't do something they wouldn't have wanted to do?
Uh, not, well, not really, cause once we get to that point, typically we use, we actually use federal dollars to, we'll, we'll actually make the improvements on that roadway, in most cases, um, so, but I, I, once we get to.
The reason I ask that is that, uh, when the, the city decided, uh, whether or not to annex a lot of areas out west, they came to the conclusion, conclusion be too expensive to repair the roads, so therefore we loan those people. So you wind up with very narrow roads, ditches on both sides.
Right.
And they paint the white lines on there about every ten years, so right now, if we're, or if it's a dark rainy night, you don't know where you're at.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it's not, these programs really aren't used.
Thousands of people out there facing those roads every day.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, like I said, if, if it's really unsafe conditions and it's something that could warrant T D I coming in and actually making the fix ourselves, you know.
The county won't do it, they don't have any money.
Right, and that, and that's typically why we use these type of projects, because once again, it's a lot of cities and counties that may not be able to afford to do these types of projects, and, uh, T D I, you know, we take the cost of it, we see if there's something we can fix. Maybe something we can talk a little bit later.
Okay. Just turn the pot, that's all.
Uh, real quick, Larry, an example, was it, uh, two forty, two forty-nine, was it used, do you know if that, uh, we, uh, conducted a study recently on that?
Been a corridor study done, but I don't know.
We can get back to that.
Cause I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure. It's done, I, that, that, these projects, and once we actually, and we don't, we, this is a new process where our office is actually doing kind of a pre-skin screening of these. Typically, they would just go directly to, um, our Strategic Transportation Investment Division, so we didn't know a lot about what's going on, but I think the sign goes on, and so we'll, we'll kind of do the pre-screenings of these, uh, requests that come from the cities and counties, so we'll be a little bit more involved with ourselves. We do a little time, oh. Uh, this is, so this is a sample road safety audit review, where they said, okay, these, you know, where the stop signs are, you know, these are, there's different signage locations are, um, I won't go into that, that's just, it's too deep for me to read. Um, oh, so functional classification, really quick, that's just, um, a way, uh, functional classification of roadways, all, all roads that are public roads are function classified, and what that means is that it tells us how that act, that actual road functions. So there's a functional classification system that comes from federal highway, um, you know, pretty much goes all the way from the local road, which once again, is a typical local road, where you may have, uh, just nothing but houses sitting within the community, all the way up to our interstate system. So everything, and then there's everything in between, um, the typical, um, uh, classifications would be, like I said, a local road, and then the next one would be a collector road, and those are, once again, so if you think about it, it's the roads that are collecting the, the, you know, traffic from the local roads. Um, and then from there, and there's minor collectors and major collectors, and from there you have arteries. And then from, uh, there's minor arteries and major arteries, and then once again, those are the roads that are usually moving traffic from, just think about it, it's kind of from one city to another community, or within a, one end of the city to another end of the city, or from community to community. Then after that, that's when you get into the freeways and the interstate system. So I guess I'm a little too deep into that, but any road that's, like I said, any road that's not a private road, which typically most of the roads are public, they're, they are function classified. Uh, within cities that are over five thousand population, uh, usually there's federal dollars to be able to spend on roads that are function classified at a certain level, when those are above a minor collector. So some cities, uh, close to here would be Dixon, Dixon gets, um, surface transportation program funds from the state to be able to do repairs on their roads that are function classified at a certain level, which doesn't, we go over too much, so we'll get too deep into that. Uh, this is, no, we're not that, sorry. Uh, so once again, the function classification system, I said, the guidance came out, uh, from federal highway in nineteen eighty-nine, and it was recently updated in two thousand thirteen. There is, if you really want to learn about function classification, there's a, a manual online, uh, if you really want to get really deep into it, I already go back. Okay, and then state aid for counties, uh, once again, that's a program that, um, comes through, um, T D I where I guess funds, uh, uh, go back to the counties. So transportation funds goes directly to the counties, and, uh, each county has a certain amount, a certain percentage of roadway that they can designate to be on the state aid system. Unless their roadway is on the state aid system, they can actually use the funds that come from T D I to, to do repairs on those roads typically as paved. Um, those percentages, like I said, is typically about twenty percent, uh, more or less of a total county miles in the roadway that can actually be used, uh, or can be designated as a, uh, a state aid road. That actually comes through our office, uh, a lot of times the highly superintendent may, uh, this, this is how it works, I mean, they, they typically, obviously, they, they'll pave a road that's on a state aid system, and then maybe the next year, uh, you know, maybe there's another road that's need, that needs paving, but may not be on the state aid system. They can actually take a road off of the state aid system and then use that miles to put on the next road, they need paving, so sometimes a lot of counties, uh, just kind of swap roads around, uh, off of, in it, on and off of that system, so they can pave their roadways. And like I said, it's, it's just a funny, because a funny mechanism, so allow counties to be able to do a lot more paving and, and keep up the roadways. Uh, you know, and I'm sure, I, I was, obviously, as you know, we can't keep up all the roadways in this system, uh, you know, to, to up the car, so a lot of counties kind of struggle with, uh, you know, of course finding the funds to, to make improvements on the roadway system, especially safety improvements. Uh, but this is just, like I said, one, one source of funding to do that. All right, so I'll let Jonathan, unless you have some more questions about anything I talked about, cause there's a lot of stuff. I'll let Jonathan talk about the roadway and transportation.
Sure, like Larry said, I'm Jonathan Russell, and I work with Larry, excuse me, thank you all the info that has come out today, I'll try to be as quick as possible, I know you're all getting tired. Um, so basically, for the past two and a half years, T D I has been working on a, excuse me, twenty-five year long range transportation plan. And so what I'm going to do is just real quick, is try to share with you kind of what we've done, the process of getting public input, and kind of what we're, we're trying to produce. Um, so, this was a video we were going to watch, but we're not going to watch it. Um, so, this is kind of starting the external outreach we did, so, kind of the basis for this is over the next twenty-five years to the year of twenty forty, state of Tennessee is going to be one of the top ten fastest growing states in the nation. Uh, our population is expected to increase right at about thirty-five percent. We're going to go from about six million people now, six point three million, to about eight point five million in the next twenty-five years. And what's interesting to us, and one thing that we looked at, is that of the most highest growing sector of the population are people over the age of sixty-five. So in, in two thousand and ten, we had about, uh, a little over three quarters of a million people, uh, who were over sixty-five, in twenty forty, we'll have one point six million. So that's just something we have to take a look at and include in the plan, and so, you know, we have to take these factors into consideration. So what we did with the plan is, we, we traveled around, we did all kinds of, of various inputs that I'm going to show you in a minute, and it looks like this is kind of jumping around on me again. But this is just a, uh, a picture of six different slides that we showed to people, and that, kind of a way that we're organizing, you know, the plan, you know, there's safety, travel trends, you know, growing freight demand, so these are just some things that we presented. Um, so, one of the things we did is we had regional summits, we had eight of those across the state. Uh, those were, you know, elected officials, uh, planning commissioners, city councils, N P Os, R P Os. So those were all across the state, and then on a much smaller scale, we did stuff called book a planner, and that's where myself or Larry or one of the other six, um, uh, community transportation planners went out, and that's from, you know, people from age twenty to, I was at one senior center and one was ninety-nine. So all types of age brackets, Rotary Clubs, churches, Chamber of Commerce, stuff like that, but we basically had an interactive session, uh, session, where we gave them clickers, uh, basically to wirelessly give us feedback to some of the questions that we posed. Um, and this was just one of the questions that was posed, I, I might ask you, it says, how much does the average Tennessean pay annually in gas tax? So, um, if you can tell thirty-four percent, most people thought it was around nine hundred dollars a year. Uh, any of you have any, you know what the right answer is, what would you say, three, six, nine, or eighteen? Any, any guesses? So it's actually, the average Tennessean pays. So it's actually, the average Tennessean pays right at about two hundred and ninety-six dollars a year to use the road. The gas tax in Tennessee is twenty-one point four cents on the gallon, there's a federal gas tax of eighteen point four cents on the gallon. So if you take the assumption that the average car goes fifteen thousand miles a year, that's what this was based on, and it gets about twenty miles per gallon, then in the state of Tennessee, you'll pay almost three hundred dollars annually, which is.
How much does the DOT get back?
How much does?
How much does Department of Transportation get of that forty cents or whatever it is?
So T-DOT gets twenty-one point four cents per gallon.
But you, you said there is a federal component of that too.
No, it's an addition. Federal gets is eighteen point four. So if you add those up, it's thirty-nine cents is your federal.
Tennessee gets, what I'm getting at, is interstate highway commit, uh, uh, repairs are probably a federal expense, I would imagine.
Right, all those funds, I mean, the majority of those funds, and probably literally like ninety-five percent of those funds come, come back to the state in different funding programs, and there's cer, there are certain programs that are for like interstate mains.
Does Tennessee get more than it pays in? Oh, or is it, never mind, it doesn't matter.
No, it's a good question. They, they actually do get more, and, and one reason why, because at a certain point of the year, into the federal fiscal year, um, some states don't use all of their funds and the federal, federal, uh, government can actually disperse those funds among other states that request those funds. So some years we do actually do get more back, um, than we actually put in.
Well, I think as I said yesterday, that the state is short hundreds of millions of dollars for road and, uh, repair and infrastructure.
That's actually correct. Actually, the governor's been touring the state the last few months, talking about we have six, like six point three billion dollars and.
If I had to fix that problem, if you had to fix it.
If I had to fix it, I would leave that up to people who are elected to do that. There, there's been tons of solutions proposed and tons more that will probably come, come in the next year or so. So, um, so, wow, okay, that was weird. Yeah, so these are just some questions that we asked people and had them give us in, uh, input on. So the question was like, which one of the following do you think is more important for T-DOT to consider or address over the next five to, uh, ten years? And so we just kind of, they're back and forth questions, uh, increase the capacity on highways to improve traffic flow, uh, resurfacing highways. So we just want to know, you know, kind of people's opinion on, on different questions that we had. Um, and it's very interesting to note that the, the type of responses you get, you know, it's pretty much depends on what part of the state you're in. Are you in a more urbanized area, a more rural area? Um, we also did, after we did the book of planners and focus groups, I'm sorry, and, uh, regional summits, we did focus groups. And so that's when we just took different stakeholders, where from the average citizen to maybe someone who's part of the consultant firm. And we just kind of got more in-depth and asking them questions, uh, about the long-range plan and getting their input. Just going forward. So at those focus groups, we kind of gave them, you know, four different scenarios. One was, do you want T-DOT to just kind of run like business as usual, you know, just kind of maintain what we, just kind of keep what we have right now and don't really do much else? Uh, second one was to evaluate projects based on the greatest needs. That would kind of more be heavily focused on more urban areas, because it would, at the places in the green, that's where most of your needs are going to be theoretically, but even rural areas have needs as well. Three is equitable distribution, so there are four T-DOT regions, we're in region three. So basically, do we make it kind of even, you know, with each region? Or four, we do non-infrastructural improvements where, where we basically focus on like multimodal aspects, um, and stuff like that. So also after we were done with this, we had like something called Wiki Maps, where we had people go online and kind of, basically all those doodles on the map were, are people's suggestions of projects we should do. So if you see the big circle around Nashville, someone would say, well, eight forty, need to completely go all the way around. So, and then we were able actually to use this data, actually the city of Knoxville asked for the input from Knox County, so they can see what citizens are saying about Knoxville. And this is data that we have available to give out to, to cities who have requested it. It's raw, it's raw data, it's not been processed or looked at. So any, you know, Joe or Harry could write anything they wanted to, so, but it's, it's good useful data for our, for our plan. What we had them do is basically it was interactive map, and they just picked what was wrong. Was it a safety problem, congestion, maybe there's a sidewalk here that needs to be? So they can make a point or draw like a little route and say, there is always traffic right here, this red light only, this green light only stays green for, you know, ten seconds. So we got some interesting feedback from that. Uh, other outreach things we did, we gave flyers, they are in multiple languages, uh, just to get people aware of what T-DOT's doing and get them to participate, uh, in the plan. Also had a YouTube channel where we, there's Larry down there in the bottom left, where we want people's input and newspaper articles. Uh, and then after we got all this, you know, you have all this information, and then we basically took the long-range plan, and it was pretty much divided into two sections. So you have a ten-year, uh, strategic investment plan, and then you have eight policy papers. And those policy papers from accessibility down to financial, the long-range plan doesn't exactly say, okay, well, we're going to build a bridge, uh, in, in Ashland City sometime in the next two years. And more focuses on the areas where we need to focus our attention. So from there, that's not supposed to be there. Sorry, this is stuff from Larry's portion. And I'm sure, I'm sure you're so upset, uh, that we didn't get a chance to do that. So, so, uh, this is just all the different inputs we had. We had over twenty thousand inputs from people, uh, we had two hundred and nine book of planner presentations across the state, which, you know, those could average from, I did one in Clarksville, three people. We did one in Mount Juliet that had two hundred people, and I'm sure there's been more, uh, and I know they've had plenty where no one showed up. So these are just different numbers of input that we had from other people, and that looks like it's so out of whack, I don't.
I think that's the end, although I, I did want to talk about, uh.
Yep, let's start it over.
I want to talk about corridor management a little bit. Let's go back. Y'all, y'all got a couple more minutes? So y'all ready to get out of here?
You're fine.
I got a couple more.
Other than that, that's our long-range plan, and it's, we're, it's currently, uh, being reviewed by the governor's office, and so it's something that we plan to get out in, uh, as soon as possible. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. I think we're missing a few slides, just really quick, something else that, um, we are trying to do, once again, to integrate more transportation and lane use decisions, is looking at corridor management, um, across the state. Um, so a couple of years ago, we actually formed some corridor management committees or corridor management agreements. Um, we did, we have two pilots that are going on right now across the state. And what it involves is getting with, um, looking at a particular corridor, one of the ones that we're doing in this area is State Route one oh nine. It's in, uh, Sumner and Wilson County, actually pretty much goes from Portland down to Lebanon. So the involved communities are obviously Sumner County, Wilson County, and then the three cities, uh, Lebanon, Galton, and Portland. Then we also involve the national NPOs, this is within the national NPO, and then of course, like I said, T-DOT's on board, and we also have our, T-DOT's are the states that finally need to see on board. So we get together and meet, um, on a regular basis, and it really does look at how can State Route one oh nine function, uh, you know, how can we continue to make it function where it's not deteriorating, you know, we don't have more congestion, more congestion, well, congestion's going to come anyway, especially as the, uh, population increases. But how can we continue to make that roadway operate, uh, efficiently? So we actually, and we have another pilot in, um, Bradley County, State Route sixty outside of, uh, kind of between Chattanooga and Cleveland. And one of our goals is to continue to, uh, do more of these throughout the state. And like I said, what it is, is really just a, almost like a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the affected communities and T-DOT. It really doesn't involve the communities spending out any funds or anything like that. It's just saying, okay, let's get together on a regular basis, and we already know we have this, this corridor, whatever this corridor is, and it's usually going to be on the state route. But, uh, you know, how can we, uh, you know, work together to make this corridor work better? Uh, one of the things that we, and actually in State Route one oh nine are looking at is access management along that corridor. You know, there's, I mean, this is a long corridor too, it's like a thirty-two, I think it's thirty-nine mile corridor. So obviously you have all different types of, it looks differently along the whole thing, you know. And some cities, uh, going through some cities like in Portland, it actually goes through their downtown, so you have like a more of a main street feel. Um, of course, there's a lot of retail, commercial development, there's industrial development, and there's some that's just, is just green, you know. So, um, along that corridor though, we were saying, well, obviously there's too much access, there's, if we're allowed too much access, especially when you get in those congested commercial areas. Well, as you all know, I'm sure, you know, people making so many turns, left and right turns, it slows down the traffic. So, uh, access management is really just a, a method, uh, that people use to be able to make sure you're, uh, continue to make it safer, number one, on the corridor. Because once again, you're eliminating a lot of turning movements, and then, uh, once again, if you eliminate a lot of turning movements, it helps the traffic move, uh, a lot smoother. So, um, this is a quick little sample here, you know, this road would be the highway, um, down at the bottom. When you have, uh, and this is just more sort of within the community, but when you have these cul-de-sacs, obviously everybody has to get out on the highway to, to move back and forth. But we have these communities that still have roads that connect, you know, everyone doesn't necessarily have to get out here to connect and, and to get, you know, from place to place. You can use these, uh, other roads to connect. Um, another example, this is just once again, looking at connectivity, uh, I know it's kind of small for you all to see, but this area would be like a mall. Let's say mall area, this is a school, then obviously these are just different communities. Well, in this, um, example where you don't necessarily have anything connecting these roads, everybody has to get back out on the major roadway just to, you know, to get from the community to the school or to the mall. So everybody has to get out here. Well, if you have more connectivity between these communities, you know, to get from the mall to the school, well, you don't even have to get on the highway, you know, you just go through the community to get there. So it takes a lot of pressure off of these major arterias, that's one of the functional classifications. Uh, the yellow road would be more of an arterial, you want to be able to make sure you're moving, uh, the traffic, um, you know, pretty much from community to community as opposed to people within one community needing to use that roadway system. So that's just kind of one example.
And Larry, on that side, I would like to add, you know, mine for the commissioners, just that when, I think for us, the challenge is, then when we add the school, you know, having that connection, thinking that eventually there will be a neighborhood and realizing, and I think it's always tough at first, you're like, well, do we really need that? You know, it's twenty years before that development happens or something like that, like it seems strange to have that road stub out. But then when you look at the overall, then it starts to make sense, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Good point, Larry. Um, these are really kind of hard to see, but this, once again, this is actually talking about connected parking lots. So, you know, once again, if you have this major corridor, you see it going out in the, the middle of the roadway, and all these different commercial developments. If none of those are connected, then everybody, you know, if you're going from Walmart to whatever big lot, so you have to get on that major roadway, and they may be right next door to each other. You know, so it's like, why not work with those developments to be able to have some type of connected parking lot? So, once again, it takes away from all the turning movements that has to happen on the, on that major roadway just to get people up and down. So corridor management strategies, uh, like I said, there's several of those, but they're really important, uh, especially if you want to protect the integrity of the, the traffic moving on your major roadways. Um, and like I said, as our population continues to grow, which as Jonathan said, two million more people are coming to, uh, the state. And actually a million of those are just right here in Billups, we see, um, we're going to have more and more congestion. So we need to find ways to be able to, to continue to move traffic without continuing to widen our roadways, because we can't keep doing that either. Yeah. Any questions? I mean, we talked about a whole lot, um, but do you have any questions? I didn't get a question.
I got questions, but, you know, you got a county with no industry, you don't need these connectors.
Uh, the industrial, well, capital.
We don't have any industry out here, you don't need to connect, there, there's no industrial connectors that you, they spent a lot of money in Nashville developing a plan for a high-speed bus traffic from St. Thomas to wherever. And, uh, the automobile are shooting down, so it's, you know, it's fine for some people, but if it's going to interfere with their commute, ain't going to happen.
Yeah, and that, that's one of the issues that, I mean, we, both looking at this county, that's a big issue for some of the, the travel area, that's an issue. Once again, we can't continue widening roadways and building roads.
You're not going to get anywhere, it's too, it's so painful to drive that people are willing to spend the money to get on a high-speed transportation, which involves a lot of dollars for T-DOT or whoever.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's got to be so painful that, uh, they're happy to jump on a train or a bus.
Right, and, uh, that, that's kind of the chicken before the egg, right, I mean, you know, do you wait until, do you wait until it's that painful and then say, oh, let's build a roadway, which, I mean, a new, a new railway road system, which now is probably double.
Forty years.
What it did ten years ago is probably double the cost, you know, so it's kind of.
Thank you, gentlemen.
A few years back, they did a, a major, uh, work on, uh, State Route two forty-nine, uh, East Kingsbury Springs Road. And they, the question that came up all the time was, why they, they started sidewalks and went down all the way up to the intersection there. Somebody said, well, why did they bring a sidewalk back towards this entrance of the subdivision? And we, you know, we never knew what, what end to deciding, where do you start the sidewalk?
So did they, so on the even, yeah, part of the roadway, they didn't put the sidewalks?
Up where I live, I live on East Kingsbury Springs Road, right on the corner, it's two lanes, and you go down the road, maybe, what, two hundred yards? It goes into three lanes, you have a turning lane in the center and, and, you know, two driving lanes. And you got sidewalks on each side, but that, that, you know, they made a decision to start the sidewalks there.
Yeah.
How did they reach that decision? I mean.
Now, you know, if I'm understanding you right, it seems like maybe it's because they just made improvements on that three-lane section, so they probably decided to put the sidewalk there.
Well, I, I think one of the, one of the biggest reasons was because that's where all the schools are, you got the junior high school and the inland high school are right across the roof from one another, and that's essentially what that section of the road covers, you know. But everybody asked the same question, well, why didn't they bring a sidewalk up by, by way, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and, 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 and I, so I'm not estimating, maybe that's, maybe that's a future phase, is to continue that improvement along the.
Well, you know, I, I, I thought, well, maybe it has to do with right-of-way because of the, the way the, the lots were or something, you know. But nobody was ever, ever given us an answer as to why they decided to start the sidewalk there and not back here, you know.
I'm not sure either.
I would just throw that, you know, that was, everybody asked, I would have it the one question everybody asked, why did, why did they bring a sidewalk up this way?
We're sure like you guys to approve our multimodal grant this year, so you can come walk some new sidewalks in Kingsbury Springs.
We submitted last year, yeah, and, uh, we got some good feedback, so.
One last question, is that going to be an eight-lane bridge when you get finished in here? The interstate over the heart of it.
I'm not sure, I'm not so sure. Is this all in the which road?
If you live in Nashville. They just put, added four more lanes in the middle, what are you going to do with the old lanes on the outside?
Um, I'm not sure. I, and I, I, I'd say, we drove over that, I was questioning that myself, because I figured it was.
They're turning up outside.
They may be, they may have just be replacing the bridge. I mean, it's a two-lane road, so I doubt that they're just going to make the bridge four-lane, and then, so they're probably just replacing the bridge and then probably take off that whole section.
Well, what they've done, I think with some of the newer bridges, they have a wider shoulder on each side of the bridge, you know. I don't think we'll change the number of lanes, but it'll probably.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I was amazed at how quickly they got done, what they got done.
It'd be fast, it'd be fast with doing some of those projects, especially those bridge projects.
I'm impressed by the, uh, thing they do in downtown Nashville where they shut that section of I forty down, replace the whole bridge over a weekend, you know, that's positively amazing to me.
Yeah, yeah, have you seen the Time Life video?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. I hope you, it would be a benefit to you all, and thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, anything else?
I'll be adjourned.
Okay, and before we do it, just say welcome to the end, all right?
Yes, yes.
Got a second on that?
Second.
Okay, uh, all the table?
Aye.
I'm going to watch the, uh, polls.